Let the record show that Board of County Commissioners meeting was called order at 9:00 on January 10th. Ms. Molly, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, ma'am?
Good morning, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I do not have any time here.
Nor do I, thank you. Audience introductions.
Jack Bubus for the Sentinel.
Tracy Ballard for the Tribune.
Molly Chilton, District Attorney.
Charles Vogel, Custer County Economic Development Corporation.
Carolyn Parker, Bull D'Amigo.
Bill Parker.
Thank you. Welcome.
Got one more.
Yes, sir. And, sir, would you mind introducing yourself? We were just going through audience introductions.
Thank you. I'm Paul Parsons.
Thank you. And you live here in Custer County?
In West Cliff. Yes, sir. I do.
Thank you, folks. Welcome. Appreciate you being here. Do there are any minutes that need to be approved?
No.
Don't believe we do. Okay.
Not that bad.
You're good, but not everything.
Commissioner Items, any new ones from yesterday?
Not for me.
Can't take it in.
Nor myself. Thank you. Attorney Items, Counselor?
Nothing new today.
All right, sir. Thank you. Administrative Assistant?
No.
Thank you, ma'am.
Geez, you guys are going too fast for me.
I know.
It's gonna be easier right up, though.
It will. I'll have these guys done fast.
We do not have any old business on the agenda, so we'll move on to new business. Yes, sir.
Perhaps I could, uh...
Okay.
Maybe we should've had the proclamation on, for old business, that, uh...
Yeah. It was past the 24-hour mark, so I guess that's something... Old business, you can bring up anytime, right?
Right. We could put on old business.
Yeah, I think that's where we should be talking about it, under old business.
Well, let's back up then, and we'll add that, too. An item under old business is the January 31 proclamation. And before we get started on that, I would mention to our audience that we have instituted a public comment policy that anytime we are going to be voting on an item, we will ask for public comment. Welcome to do that at that time. If it's not an item that we're voting on, adding stuff to the agenda or whatever, then we would not have public comment there. But I will certainly allow the opportunity for that, and then, of course, at the end of our meeting, we'll also have a public commentary. Mr. Jay, would you like to take the lead on this matter?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Yesterday, we discussed proclamation naming Ben Rusher Day for January 31st of this year. Brenda volunteered to write the proclamation. I've reviewed it. I think she did a wonderful job. I know you guys have seen it. I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we accept the proclamation that we name January 31st, 2018 as Ben Rusher Day.
I'll second it.
Thank you. They moved in second that we approve January 31st, 2018 as Ben Rusher Day. Discussion. Did you get a chance to look at all three of the documents on the different parchments? Okay. What we...
Well, and that's all, like, details.
We could do that later.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I will invite John Rusher and Ian Janskow to attend that meeting on January 31st. I think that would probably be... I was gonna say, be appropriate to handle that under new business? First item under new business, so...
Yeah. That would probably be the best way to do it.
One way or the other. And we will obviously present that proclamation on parchment paper framed.
Same level.
Do you want to sign it that very day, or shall we have it signed ahead of time?
I think we probably oughta sign it ahead of time.
I don't think we do have to frame it.
Put it framed up.
Would you like me to read the proclamation?
I would.
I'd be happy to.
And then, I have another comment.
Did you want to ask Clint about the "ands"?
Clint, when I've done these in the past, I used to put "whereas" at the end of the sentence, but "and," and the next sentence says "whereas." Does it make any difference to you?
Yeah. Look, yeah. I...
There's no "and" at the end of each sentence.
And I agree. I think that's probably... Yeah, that's correct. I hadn't even noticed that.
Okay.
Yeah, after the semicolon each sentence, "and" leads into the next "whereas."
I'll go ahead and read it with that change.
Okay.
This is a Custer County, Colorado, proclamation declaring January 31st, 2018 as Ben Rusher Day. Whereas, Custer County recognizes that Ben Rusher, on the night of September 3rd, 2017, without regard for his own safety, he did give his life trying to save his brother, Weldon Rusher. And whereas Ben Rusher was a lifelong resident of Custer County. And whereas Ben Rusher was well-known by and a friend to a great number of residents of Custer County. And whereas Ben Rusher's family is deep-rooted in the Custer County community. And whereas, Custer County would like to honor Ben Rusher for his selfish act of love and bravery. Now therefore, Custer County, Colorado hereby declares January 31st, 2018 to be Ben Rusher Day. Adopted on this 10th day of January 2018, signature blocks for Chairman Flower, Vice-Chair Kanda, myself, and Ms. Camper as the clerk and recorder.
Thank you, sir.
And say selfless.
It was selfless, not selfish.
Okay. Not selfless.
Did I read something wrong?
It was... You said selfish accidentally.
Oh, sorry.
And then, in the lower right-hand corner, will be the seal of the county. I wonder, Clint, do you have a copy of this?
I...
Are you looking at it or not?
I have it on my computer, but I can't bring it up.
You have a copy, I thought.
Oh, I guess I do. I'll take it back. I didn't even go through these yet.
I wonder after...
Or technology.
Certainly, I've had an opportunity to provide input, and I did not. But after... And thank you for doing that. After listening to you read it, I was able to get into the flow a little more. I wonder, as more a matter of form, if we shouldn't have declaring January 31st, 2018 as and then Ben Rusher Day on a separate line? Or... Apologize. Or do you feel like it's defined the way it is?
Personally, I think it's fine the way it is because we have the very top of it declaring Ben Rusher Day, so this is just...
I thought we had one other thing on that.
I'm talking about right here.
Right at the top.
Is that being scrolled down to Ben Rusher Day on its own line, or...
It's fine with me if you like to... No issue with that.
You want to do that?
Let's try that.
I don't know what's more appropriate.
So we can look at it. Yeah, I'm not sure that ending that sentence with the word "as" would look good, but...
So did we decide on memorial wasn't appropriate some...
Right.
We discussed that later earlier.
And then, on the third "as" statement, Ben Rusher's family is deep-rooted or deeply rooted?
Deeply.
Deeply.
I would think deeply would maybe be more appropriate.
Yeah.
Brenda, can you add that?
I got it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, one other thing in looking at this, now therefore, it's usually the Board of County Commissioners of Custer County, Colorado hereby declares...
Right. Because the county itself is not doing that.
Right, so it probably should say the Board of County Commissioners hereby declares... And that would actually move Ben Rusher Day down to the next line.
Mm-hmm.
And you could actually make that, if you wanted to make it a little bigger, or do it the same size.
Yeah, I think that's the right way to do it. Like, thumbs it up above the proclamation.
Yeah, I think it gets lost. I mean, the proclamation is certainly pronounced, but, uh... I'd like to see...
Silence.
Yeah, I forgot if you want...
Ben Rusher Day, by...
Pardon?
Ben Rusher Day.
Ben Rusher Day on a line of its own, Brenda, is what I'm thinking, gentlemen.
At the top.
At the top.
Bottom.
After you've put in that, the Board of County Commissioners, Ben Rusher Day, is gonna move to the next line anyway.
Mm-hmm.
You might want to...
Make it big.
And make it a little bigger, bold type, something where it stands on.
And then, on the last... Proclamation itself, I wonder if that should read, the Board of County, Custer County Commissioners hereby declares January 31st, 2018 as Ben Rusher Day, instead of to be Ben Rusher Day? Because to be means some... At some point in the future, and we're actually declaring that day in the present tense, is my thinking. What do you, gentlemen, feel about that?
That's fine. It's okay.
Okay.
Take a vote.
Yep. You okay, Brenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other discussion, gentlemen? Public comment? Hearing none, please see to vote. All in favor of adopting or accepting the proclamation is... Brenda will print it out for us. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Let the record show, we have accepted the proclamation. Brenda, thank you, Jay, for bringing that to the board. Appreciate that. I will contact both parents. I would assume it would be appropriate to include family members?
Anybody they want to...
And any other guests, or that we, the audience, or...
I would think we should ask them that they can bring anybody they like, and if we overflow, maybe the courtroom would be available for us to use.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I feel, but certainly extend the invitation to the parents and their families directly to them, and then I feel like the rest of us, if we want to do that, we should be able to. Move forward with that. Thank you.
You know, it would be nice to just move it over there if that's available anyway.
Yeah, uh...
It would be a kind of a more formal setting.
Really would. And a whole lot more room.
Yeah, and if they're just a famous name, they will overflow.
Yeah. Would we need to recess to do that, or would that be considered part of our meeting, and we could just move the location temporarily?
Yeah, I don't think we need to recess. We can just say that we'll step over into the court.
Could that...
Can you check, Brenda, and see if the courtroom's gonna be available?
Mm-hmm. Um, I'll have to go over and check with Kay.
Do you have to record it over there, then? Be able to...
I'd have to just move up.
Move your computer.
But I don't see any...
Just set up there and have the meeting there, save a lot of hassle.
There's nothing on the docket for the 31st?
Okay.
But sometimes they have other stuff that they do, so I'll double-check with Kay.
Now, who's taking it?
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. I mean, I certainly would not be opposed to having a meeting there.
That's fine. It's a little hard for Brenda, because she needs to be on, be at her computer sometimes, but...
Yeah, and that's voucher day, so I don't know. How do you feel about that?
Um, usually what I'm doing is, like, hand stuff, so I could take it in there if I need to, so...
Well, would you check on the availability, first of all, and then we can make that final determination on the 24th? Is that okay, you gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to new business. Our first item of business is discussion of the district attorney's budget. Ms. Molly Chilton from Slightland.
Yes, thank you.
Is here today, so please, if you would come forward.
Thanks. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate that.
Good morning again.
You can put the hot seat however you feel comfortable.
Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully, the appropriate cell phone has been silenced this morning, so we won't interrupt you. I apologize.
I think we've called them all.
Is I on... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I had a judge one time that if your phone went off, then his courtroom would take your phone away for 24 hours.
Oh, geez. Probably could do that.
Must've been interrupted a lot, I'd say.
Right. I wish those days would come back. We used to have Judge Marshall, who, if he walked in with a cutoff t-shirt or a hat on your head, oh, boy. We don't see that kind of courtroom protocol these days.
Actually, thanks.
So I think I was invited today to talk about our construction project in the DA's office in Canyon. Is that what you all wished to discuss?
That's correct, yes.
So, at our budget meeting that we had back in the summer with the on-bank group, everybody collected, was our pitch that we wished our budget to be adopted as proposed, our 2018 budget to be adopted as proposed, with Fremont County paying its full proportionate share. However, we recognized that we have a building construction need, and that Fremont County, in order to come to the table, the boards as a whole might agree to let Fremont County pay less than their full dues for 2018, and reduce them by the amount that we're receiving from the state of Colorado for our prosecution fellow. So we have one lawyer now, who started with us before she was licensed and had passed the bar, and she's paid for through a CDAC fellowship program through August of this coming year. So the savings is, you know, about $38,000 and change that we've been tossing around on emails about what to do with that. So we suggested to the boards as a whole, well, perhaps, if you all wished, you could allow Fremont County to pay the $38,000 less and use that toward construction costs. There was no official action on that idea at our on-bank meeting, and so after that, it just became sort of an email thread, discussions, continuing discussions.
So Fremont County hasn't taken a position on it?
So in the email threads, so the four boards together didn't address that question. You know, yes, we think that's a good idea, or no, we don't think that's a good idea. Fremont should just pay its full share, and we'll figure out construction costs some other way. So just was it undecided at that time? Since then, Sunny Bryant from Fremont County had been directly communicating with myself and Tom Ladue about the idea of us paying that $38,000... It's $38,667, I believe, is the number. About our office paying that to Fremont County, and Fremont County using that as a match for a DOLA grant that includes both construction for a new courtroom on the top floor of the judicial building in Fremont County, as well as build out of our space. Our response to that was, could we please see an estimate? And could we please see the bid? And could we please understand what the actual cost of our construction will be to ensure a couple of things? Number one, that it's a fair bid, that accurately reflects what it will cost to build out our space, because we're only talking about four office spaces in our building, in our particular space. And also to make sure that you all, as commissioners as a whole, are not subsidizing the judicial branch, and that none of those dollars are gonna be used toward courthouse space that's being done up on the top floor. The response from Fremont County was, we don't have firm estimates. We have to get this grant submitted, so please just help us get the grant submitted. So we don't know what they're basing their estimates on, and we don't...
Out of wagon.
Right. So we honestly don't know. But we didn't want to hold up the grant either, and I conferred with Greg Felt over... Well, I actually conferred with all the commissioners over in Chaffey, and we talked it through. And from their perspective, we talked through some things about, well, if Fremont County agrees not to increase the rent, if Fremont County agrees this, using this as a match is contingent upon them approving our 2018 budget request, we can probably absorb this cost if it turns out they need to use it for that purpose. And so I... My response was, I am okay with the four boards of commissioners agreeing to this process with these stipulations.
Stipulations.
Exactly. And I believe that they filed the DOLA grant. I believe that's where we are at this point. It is possible that we will not receive it, or that they will receive something that will not cover our office, in which case this whole thing is...
And you don't know how much they submitted it for?
Oh, I do, and I can send that to you all again. It includes both, I think, the bid that they had, or the... It's not the... So, excuse me. The line that they had for our cost was about $112,000, which we thought was high, so...
Just gonna see if I can...
May I ask a question if I may, please?
Sure.
Fremont County, if I'm not mistaken, failed to pay their fair share of the DA's budget last year, and now they're asking for an additional $38,000 advantage to themselves that the other counties that are subsidizing the DA's office are paying for. This is a problem for me. You know, I had a real problem last year. I mentioned that at our meeting when we had that over in Slightland a couple months ago. Your services to them aren't exactly the same as they are to all the other counties. I mean, you didn't curtail services because they didn't fund the budget as the rest of us do. And now to come in and ask for an additional compensation paid for through the actual money that the other three counties are paying 100%, and they're getting... They're gonna pay 100% less than $38,000 plus. This doesn't sit well with me, unless we have a... We're going to have a major project here. We're looking at potentially building a new justice center, doing something. I mean, we're under a... I don't want to say a mandate, but we're under strong suggestion that we must do something with our court system and our court buildings and stuff like that. So we're considering a justice center, having new court facilities, jail, that kind of thing. So when I read this, is when I asked Brenda to ask you to please come talk to us, because this is really doesn't sit well with me. I'm just being honest, because I don't feel Fremont... I feel like the free part of freeloadings fits with them on how this is going. I'm having issues with this.
Commissioner, I completely agree. And that's why when we were at our meeting back in, I believe it was August, when we met.
Right.
That was exactly what I conveyed. I don't think it's fair, and I don't think it's right. And so what I said was, I think that the boards of commissioners as a whole should encourage Fremont to pay its fair share, end of story. However, we were looking at litigating with them, as you recall.
Right.
We were looking at potentially having to be filing a lawsuit. And the... Go ahead, sir.
Just because, you're right on the... Why didn't they do it? And if they didn't do it last year, what, are they gonna pay this year?
So...
Or the next year?
I think that's...
Is it the same excuse?
That's been the fundamental question, and why we hired a lawyer, and why we were looking at litigation, because we firmly believe that if the boards by majority vote, that means the four counties by majority vote, say, we approve this budget.
That's what it is.
That's what it is.
Everybody does. Right. And they reneged somehow, and they took it away.
And they're...
After they agreed.
No, they never did agree.
They never agreed to it, but...
Correct.
And they didn't pay it. And when they came back to the table in August, they said, you know, we're going to pay it in 2018, and I felt we were comfortable with that, I said, okay, that's behind us, let's move forward. But now, when I read that, they're asking for me, Custer County, to be one of the counties subsidizing their building project. I'm thinking, this is just not right, and I personally, I have not discussed, we've not had this in a meeting yet. I have a real issue with this.
I agree, and it's... From my perception of what happened in 2017, is that, again, we believe that if there's a majority vote, it carries, and it has in the past.
Correct.
Always to the detriment of the DA's budget. When some commissioners' boards have said, yes, we want to approve what the DA is asking for, and some boards have said, no, we can't go that far, we can't afford it.
You normalize the vote.
It has always been to our detriment that that vote has carried, and we've lived with it. We've lived with it. We don't have any choice, because that's the way it should work. This is the only time, 2017 was the only time, when there was a majority vote among the boards to adopt the DA's budget, to the extent that it would bind Fremont to pay that amount, and they said, no, we, as independent boards in our local counties, get to decide what we pay. We're not bound by an on-bank vote. And so... And I would love to see us meet more often as an on-bank group. I would love to see some fidelity about how the DA's budget is approached. Is it a... Because we always also get this response from Fremont County that we are a department of the Fremont County budget. Well, I disagree with that, but those are the things that we need to talk about. We're a distinct entity, distinct...
They can still argue that they're department-funded. I mean, that's a silly argument.
So I agree with you. I'm at your mercy, however, as you know, as well as Fremont.
I'm not really trying to whine at you. I'm just telling you why I'm not really up on this. And if the 2017 thing didn't happen, and I felt that Custer County could come back when we go into building a judicial system and say, can we do that also? I'd go, cool, if we're setting a precedent, let's set a precedent, and all the county, all four counties can then take advantage of that. But I'm not sure I feel that way. I mean, I'm not sure if I come back and say, I need to get a rebate, or however you want to look at it, from my budgetary expense to your office, I need something better, even though for the judicial system, I'm sure that we're establishing that as a precedent.
The other option that I floated to Sunny, because in the judicial branch portion of the grant, they didn't have a cash match. They just used a estimate of furniture, equipment, and that kind of thing. And I asked the question, why can't we do the same? We can get you numbers on furniture, equipment, and that's a pledge that's real, because we'll have to buy those things if we're built out in terms of office space, and no one is gonna cut us a check separately for those items. And Sunny's response was that there was some need to do this, because the grant manager, advisor said that they had, it would be more successful with a cash match. So you all are welcome to express how, you know, whatever you wish in terms of the strategy, but we do need the space, I'll say that, and it hasn't been offered in any other fashion. So we didn't want to obstruct the possibility of having grant dollars to assist.
So the money really is needed as a matching grant for DOLA? Is that what this is coming from?
That's what Ms. Bryant, that's what Sunny has said.
Because there's many opportunities to get matching grants for DOLA. We look at those all the time. And some of them are not cash. I mean, they're in kind donations, that kind of thing, so... My fear is that Fremont needs to figure out where to get $38,000 from Fremont to do this. I mean, that's my feeling. Again, I'm just talking for myself. We have not had any conversation in this, but I just... I'm uncomfortable with this.
We could schedule another on-bank meeting to address just this piece.
I would love to do that.
Okay.
And that's expressed. I'd like to hear what all of the four counties have to say, and Custer County's not gonna hold this up if it's, you know, if it's the consensus, I suspect, and I can't speak for my co...
Well, being you, let me, let me ask a question first. Because has there already been a budget established for this year, $38,000? Right. And so is there a 30K request for, or expectation from Fremont already that they've already said they're not, or they are going to pay? Let's pretend the construction isn't an issue. There's still a requirement for them to pay a fair share, which they didn't do last time.
2017.
So is there, is there money there now?
So I sent out a request to get everyone's approved budgets. And I just received that information yesterday, so I haven't had that chance to compare it with our spreadsheet in terms of what we asked for. But it was, it's my understanding that Fremont approved our whole request. I need to look at the numbers and make sure that's accurate. But, and then their expectation is we pay them back the 38 and change for the build out.
Okay. That's a separate issue. That's a DOLA thing. But what we care about is making sure that they pay their fair share.
Yes, sir.
And then whatever we have to do for the construction, is there a requirement for us all four counties to throw in on that too?
You don't have, the way that-
They're going to charge rent. They're going to have to rent because it's a better building or something?
You all will pay your dues as, on a monthly basis as you do ordinarily. Their proposal is not that you cut them a specific check. Their proposal is as you all pay your dues, our office will cut them a check.
Okay. Well, I understand.
I look at it as a rebate, is the way I read it.
Yeah. This is an email. I'll read part of it from Sunny. And a little bit out of context, but I think we'll just get to the point that she says that Fremont County does not have the ability to put in matching funds towards this project. So my question is, would the other counties be okay if the DA uses $38,000 to put towards finishing their space? She doesn't really specifically say to put towards matching funds to the grant. And then later in this thread, she also says that, "Here is a copy of the grant proposal we submitted." So they did submit that to DOLA.
With the $38,000 from the DA's a match.
Oh, that's kind of a presumptuous thing then, isn't it?
I like your idea. Let's get the four counties together. Let's talk about this. We're not talking about a tremendous amount of money. I recognize that. But it's more concept than anything else. I mean, I don't want the free, Fremont to be a freeloader.
Well, yeah. And then-
Yeah. What about this year?
It is a precedent. It is a question of precedent. And I agree with you because you don't have us here. We don't have any physical space here. When we come to court, we commute from elsewhere. And so you, so to a certain extent, even though you're the smallest in terms of contribution, to a certain extent, you're subsidizing that we pay rent in Chaffey County, that we pay rent in Fremont County because that's where our lawyers for you are housed.
I understand that.
It's my understanding that when Fair Play gave us office space, which is right next, right across the court, the parking lot from the courthouse, I don't believe the DA's office contributed anything to that project in terms of paying for it. And we used to pay rent in Fair Play, and now they've forgiven that obligation. So we pay no rent in Fair Play. I think we should talk past and future about how, if we need capital projects and they include the district attorney's office, how's that going to work for everyone?
Exactly. It's, that's where I am exactly. So I know you came all the way over here to hear me whine, but I appreciate it.
I appreciate your interest. I appreciate you asking the questions. What, are we doing this correctly?
Yeah. So that's really, I mean, that was my, when I read this, I said, "Will we please ask?" I didn't really expect you to come. I thought maybe someone from your office would come. I know you're very busy, but I appreciate that. It tells us that we're not, we're just as important as everybody else.
You are.
I appreciate that a lot. So that was my question.
I actually have two, if that's okay. There was a, an idea, well, this $38,000 is a one-time thing.
Yes.
And so we can't rely on there ever being another one for other counties to share. Is that correct?
I believe that's accurate.
And, and, and every time that I've been here and your office has been here, there's always been, you guys just don't have enough money.
Right.
So what would you do with this $38,000 besides giving it to Fremont? That would help all four counties out.
Salary adjustment.
So what, what is the process? Do you get together once a year and decide to set the rent or project things? Or how does, how's it, because I've not been involved.
Yes.
How do the four counties work together and set the rent?
So I've been doing this since 2004. I attended, even though I didn't take office the first time until 2005, I attended the budget meeting in advance. And it's changed with every group of commissioners. And every, every group of commissioners, as between the various counties, have different relationships, different expectations. But it has been frequent that we have voted in the room. When I, when I did it my first four years, that was, I can't say that it happened every year that way. Can't say that people didn't go back.
But you went separately to each place.
No, no.
You had everybody came in and all the commissioners showed up?
At least one, and frequently a whole board, but at least one commissioner from every county.
With the authority to commit that board?
Yes. And so it was frequent that we would vote in the room and that there had been pre-discussion potentially about, you know, what everybody could do. In more recent years, it's been a practice of we meet and then everybody says, "Well, we're not sure what we can do yet." So we're leaving the table without really talking about anything. And then we don't have a follow-up on bank meeting, which has meant a lot of concerns on our part, that pretty much the practice has become that the various boards simply approve a number. And no one is really talking to us or working with us on what we're doing and, and who our people are and what our positions are and what they should be paid and how we should plan for the future, which is one of the things that Eisenman up in Park County has pointed out. He has brought to the table the idea that we should be having these discussions. What do we want? Deputy DA's who've worked with us for three years, we're making, what are we going to do to keep people? What are we going to do to hire good people? Because we're a 10-lawyer office and over the last six months, we've cycled seven lawyers out of our office. And we can't get good applicants to apply. Those are the kinds of things I think we should talk about, but we simply don't anymore. We haven't for several years past. It's just a number. Here, Chilson, here, Ledu.
Make it work.
Here's your number. Make it work.
So my mind is kind of adjusting at the moment. I was under the impression that you set your budget, we, the counties, hopefully give you the budget that you're requesting. And then my feeling is, we let you determine how best to use your budget. But you're discussing now potentially having the counties be part of that decision.
So we appreciate that there's flexibility given from the boards.
Right.
And we need that too, because when seven lawyers quit, you are not necessarily replacing them at the same salary.
I don't want to read your resumes.
And you don't need a micromanage and none of us need that.
Exactly.
Well, I thought you meant that we ought to be getting together to make sure we understand the budget because it's going to fluctuate year to year. You might want more. And then we agree to what the fourth of that ought to be or whatever our percentage is supposed to be.
It's percentage.
Because if we're small, we don't pay as much, I understand. And then we're not going to tell you how to use it. I mean, if you decide, because things change.
Yes, yes. But I think the, what I'm asking for is more engagement in terms of making the decision about funding, more about what we need and what we do and what the priorities are with DA funding, then, okay, well, it's come to the end of the year and this is what we can afford for the DA.
That certainly makes more palatable for me to say, "We're looking for our, the contribution from Custer County to be X amount more dollars." And I understand, well, and here's why we need it. That's an important aspect that we haven't really heard. Now, at the August meeting, we did the turnover and, you know, you're basically a training ground for good attorneys to move on to jobs that pay twice as much. So the first question comes up, "Well, why are you not paying a fair, I don't want to say fair salary, a more competitive salary to keep them?"
Yes.
So, I mean, this is, this would make a lot of sense to sit down and discuss those kind of things. If I understand the need, I can help fulfill it much better than, "Here's my request for dollars."
Thank you. That's exactly what we would love, is to be more engaged with you all.
I would, I personally would, and I suspect my colleagues feel that way too, and I suspect all the commissioners feel that way too. They understand what's going on and I'm happy to pay for it if I assume I can, that kind of thing, you know, if it's realistic. So let's do that.
Just for your information, in this battle that we had with Fremont County in 2017, when, it's a long story, and so let me try and cut it short. They, without explanation, without describing what we didn't need, they just decided not to fund our request. We pushed hard on that and said, "You, that's not how you do it. If you're not going to fund our full request, tell us what you're cutting. Tell us what we don't need. Tell us what you're not funding. Let's get specific." And so they set on Martin Luther King Day a special meeting into January to justify not approving our request that everybody else had approved. And at that meeting, they had prepared a memorandum that indicated why they didn't think we needed what we needed. And that memorandum was to the effect that, "We don't believe the DA when she says her caseload has increased this amount. We don't believe the DA when she says her trial numbers have increased this amount." And that document-
Why didn't they have that discussion at the first, when they're supposed to?
Yes, sir.
That's how you set the budget.
Yes, sir. And that document flies in the face of the data that's objective. It's not something I make up every year. And when they pitched their DOLA grant, it was very interesting. A year later, exactly, it says, "The reason that we need to, this space is because the trial numbers have increased, the case numbers have increased." So just wanted you to beware of that.
Well, I certainly agree with Commissioner Prince. Number one, it's, it flies in the face of common sense and even courtesy to go about it that way, to say, "We're not paying for it." And then come back a year later and say, "Ah, you know, now we, we need some money." I think we all have to sooner or later pay for our choices that we make. I don't think we can have our cake and eat it too all the time. So I also am not real thrilled about the idea of them wanting to tag on to this $38,600. I also agree that I think it'd be great to have a face-to-face with all the boards or their reps at least to sit down and, and it would be interesting to hear Fremont counties take in person instead of run through a thread of emails.
Yeah. Yeah. It's hard to keep up on the emails.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
Would your office facilitate that meeting? Put that together? Pick a date? Yeah, I would certainly be in favor of that.
Good question, kind of in the opposite way. How will it negatively affect your office by them not doing the project that they tried to do?
If we don't get the grant.
Right.
Then I think we would have to ask them if we can have permission to bid it ourselves because as they've said, Fremont County doesn't have any money to put toward this project. So if the grant doesn't come through, then I would want to get an independent bid, see what we could do for what kind of cash we could put at it, up to potentially this $38,000. And so that might mean building out one or two spaces.
And I would have much less anxiety over this if what you said, "We're going to use some of the money that the four counties gave us as a part of a matching grant for us to, us, the DA's, to build out space." I would feel much less because then this is a your project, not a Fremont rebate project, even though in essence, it's all the same thing.
Yeah, but it's our project and it's a four county.
Yeah. So that's kind of how I feel. So I don't want to hurt the DA's office by saying, "We don't support it because..." And how's that going to affect you if we don't support it? Well, now I'm not going to have offices and I don't have a place to put my DA's and da-da-da-da. That's not the, that's not the goal of what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is equity is all I'm really talking about.
I appreciate that. And I think from Fremont County's perspective, and hopefully people, other counties thinking ahead about this, I think by structuring it this way, Fremont County has in a sense invited you all into their business in a way that they would not have if they had just pledged Fremont County dollars. Because now it really is your business, isn't it?
Exactly.
So-
Or when they had that yearly meeting, they say, "Well, we can't afford it now." And then that's when you have the discussion, why? And we get, well, figure out how to reach them.
In August, as soon as, as soon as Fremont County said, "We couldn't afford to pay," the three others instantly said, "Neither could we."
Yeah. It has the point to make sure that they sit down and say that publicly and then work out why not. And if they all agree, then fine. Whatever the budget is, then it remains that way. You don't get to go change it after the fact.
Yeah.
Yeah. It just seems to me that it just sets a tempo and it sets a mindset from their part that's going to make it difficult for me to sit down and slap them on the back and say, "Yeah, I'm with you all the way." That's hard when they slap their back and say, "Now, we just don't believe you, number one. We're not going to pay our part, number two." When every other county, I'm sure, struggles just as hard as we probably did to make that payment. So I would say they're kind of behind the eight ball based on previous action and non-action in the case and not paying that. So.
So where should we go from here?
I will start an email thread about getting everybody together. I know. Believe me, it's better than picking up the phone any times.
Right.
I think, could we meet here?
Certainly.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely. And I don't know, do you, would you feel the need to include in that email our basic position on it at this point or that we would just like to get everybody together?
Here's what I would pitch, and you give me your input. I would pitch that, "Let's get together. Let's talk about the DA's office space in Fremont County, the DOLA grant. Let's talk about how this was presented in the first place. Let's talk about the precedent of it and how it may impact future budget discussions. Let's also talk about what happens if the DOLA grant doesn't come through." Does that sound?
I like that a lot.
Okay.
We also have, just FYI, if we need more space, we have a large meeting space down in Wemo. We could meet.
Okay.
Because the Wemo Community Center, it has a large room. If this is not sufficient size, or if we need to travel, the three of us, I'm sure will travel somewhere else.
I think it'd be fun to meet here. Could we meet in the courtroom?
We could if there's nothing scheduled.
Okay.
We do it all the time as long as it's big enough.
Brenda would be the contact person.
And we probably ought to give you windows of days that you could schedule that meeting.
That'll be the first step, I'll work with Brenda on that?
Yeah. Yeah. I just was sitting here thinking too, if, if this shoe was on Custer County's foot and we claimed last year, "We're not going to pay our share," and then turn around and come back and want a chunk from the people who we weren't going to pay.
Catch all kinds of-
I don't imagine we'd get very fortunate, but.
Why is it when I come here, I just feel like people are so reasonable and faint?
Because we are.
As soon as you leave, it may change.
Yeah. Yeah. Once I walk out the doors.
We want to be appropriate. We need to be, we're going to be appropriate and do our fair share.
Absolutely.
We're not going to be the thon in the, in, you know, the four counties, I hope.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope that-
Less we need to be.
I'm not holding you to anything. I just appreciate coming here and-
I really appreciate you coming up. I really thought you'd said, I forgot the gentleman, you're just number two and come in.
Tom.
Tom. I expected him to come up, but it's so nice you'd come up.
It's my pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Very much. Appreciate it. Feel free to contact Brenda anytime.
Thank you.
All right.
Good job.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Molly. Nice to see you.
Take care.
Come back anytime. And you're welcome to stay for the whole rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Tom, if I could suggest something? I mean, this is just from a long-range perspective. I think it would be a really good idea if all four counties and the district attorney's office could get together and have an intergovernmental agreement on procedures as to how they're going to handle these budgetary issues because it seems-
It would be a discussion item. That's a great one.
Would you like me as well?
Yeah. I think that's important. It's not, it's not optional or, or, or just whatever we feel like at the time. Let's get an agreement.
And, and if it's going to be a majority vote that determines what all the, get all that in writing and agreement for future years.
Yeah. So they don't walk away from the meeting and then turn around and say, "Well, no, we're not, we're not really buying."
We weren't really bound to this. We just, we need the money now.
That's not our legal interpretation.
Right. Yeah. Thank you, Molly. Good point, uh, councillor, thank you, appreciate it. Uh, next item of the business is the Custer County Economic Development Corporation Trails Initiative, uh, item. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Tom Flower.
I'm Paul Parsons.
Good to meet you, sir, good morning.
Hi, Jay.
What's your name?
Harvey.
Yeah.
You got to shake my hand too, even though we did last night.
Yes.
Charles.
Brenda, we need to put economic development on every single DLCC meeting, just as a staple.
Just put that up there, you bet.
I was teaching.
Uh, we have, uh, two things we'd like to do this morning. Number one, introduce Paul as the head of our Trails Initiative and status that to you, that we were authorized, oh, over a year ago with a DOLA, or not a DOLA, but an OEDIT two-point-oh grant, which says there's no money, but they, they do help. For our kickoff, we did ask and got Luis Benavides, the head of outdoor recreation, came and gave a kickoff. And I chaired the meeting for six months, more or less, and then thank goodness, Paul came along and volunteered to do that. So I'll let Paul introduce himself and give a status on what we had been doing. And then the second element is a request for funding.
Okay. Very good.
Paul, would you, what's your, spell your last name?
Parsons, P-A-R-S-L-N-S.
One R.
Yes, sir. Thanks for giving me a few minutes in your very full life, very full agenda.
It's what we do, you're welcome to take your time.
Well, I'll seek to be brief. My name is Paul Parsons, I've lived here in West Cliff full-time for two years, and I've owned a home here and have been a voting member here in this county for four and a half. Nicole and I and our dog, Nellie, we, uh, love the trails and get out on them very often. Uh, I recently became volunteer leader for Trails Initiative, as it was called in the beginning, and we've just changed our name to Trails for All, which reflects, um, one of our six values that we've adopted as a, as a grassroots movement. Uh, I'm here today to introduce the effort to you by a short summary of our work and our history and our dreams, and, um, to introduce myself as one of those faces of Trails for All, because we may need to be coming back from time to time to, um, seek guidance, approvals, um, perhaps support for one thing or another, especially with respect to CDOT, uh, if something involves highways. Obviously, Trails for All is an unfunded, all-volunteer organization. And as, uh, as Charles just said, it came into being about just over a year ago through, um, being included as a possible avenue for pursuit, uh, discovery, uh, about what's, what shape our trails are in as an asset, maybe an undeveloped asset, uh, for moving forward in our future as a county. Uh, we were created just over a year ago to do three things. The first one, uh, was to assess, what do we have here? And we've really completed that. We've found out, um, at least, as far as we know right now, two-hundred-and-twenty-three trails, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-point-nine miles of trails in the county officially. Uh, if you stretch them over into the adjoining counties, it turns into something over three-hundred-and-sixty miles worth of trails that we have immediately available. And that's for...
Just, uh, county land or national forest trails?
Totally above.
Yeah, everything.
When you say that, you're meaning everything.
Yes, sir.
Any county, regardless of ownership.
Whether it's on BLM or...
Yes.
Or whatever.
And, and in our pursuit of the BLM, we have not discovered any, um, trails officially on BLM land. It's all on national forests, one official trail here between the towns, and then county roads that are used, uh, for a variety of off-terrain vehicles, uh, some snowmobiling in the winter, et cetera.
No private land?
No, sir, no.
How many miles was that thing right there?
Uh, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-point-nine. That'll change. Dorothy Urban claims that she's got some that she thinks that aren't indicated in what we've presently got. So it'll be a dynamic thing, but, um, so that's the first purpose. Our second purpose was to find out how they're maintained and by whom and what shape they're in. And, um, we have fairly well accomplished that as well. All of the trails, except for the one between the towns, is on Forest Service land. So I spent a lot of time with Jeff Utheer and, uh, just discovering, uh, you know, how much do, are they able to get out? You know, they have really two full-time people, and they're not able to maintain trails very well. And so we've entered into a conversation about, well, what can we do that's legally fine and, and according to, you know, federal guidelines and whatnot. I'll tell you more about that in just a second.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Sure, as we go. Uh, now you said county roads also.
Yes.
And then I heard you say that all of your trails, with the exception of the one between the two towns, are on national, are on, uh, not national forest, I'm sorry. Are you talking about the county roads in the forest lands?
Yes.
Or county roads out in the county?
Um, yes. Both.
Yes, yes. By virtue of the fact that a year or two ago, ATV travel was authorized on the county roads.
Yeah.
State forest was the phrase I was trying to find, I'm sorry. But, so you're saying that all of the identified trails currently are on state forest land?
National, national forest land, yeah. Yeah, I'm grateful for your correction because to be officially correct, some county roads are used as official trails, for example, by ATVs, and they're, so that's county...
Through your organization.
That's county...
Through your organization?
Just by default.
They're used as trails or just by people?
Well, and it's like ninety-six is part of the front-range trail that, that comes from I-25 out. So the correct answer is no private property, but county roads right-of-way, Forest Service roads and trails. Uh, and as you said, the BLM, they're, they don't have any trails.
Yeah.
So we're talking inclusive.
And national forests.
Yeah, and the national forest, we're in. We're talking inclusive of anything that's identified by anybody.
Right, because my first question was, I guess, and I didn't ask it because I was trying not to interrupt, is how do we define a trail? What constitutes a trail?
Yes.
Is it by use, obviously on a county road? I'm assuming it would be, because our county roads aren't trails, they're county roads, but if they're used as trails, then you...
Yes.
Include them.
And you designate them as a trail and map somehow, that it's not every county road that's part of the trail system, it's just the ones that you select.
That would presently be true. Uh, we're really working off of the Nor, National Forest Service, um, identification of trails and their classifications of trails. So, you know, it includes fifty-inch-wide ATV travel, uh, it includes, um, actually, um, some county roads that don't have any kind of, um, definition, other than the fact that they've been set aside for use by ATVs legally.
So an unapproved county road.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay. I wonder if we could get that information forwarded to us as well at some point?
Oh, yeah, certainly. We've got a draft, he'll, I'm sure, get to a draft revision to the Trails Master Plan that's inclusive on that.
Thank you, Tom. The third purpose was to find ways to promote the trails as a means of, um, helping our own residents in our county to know where trails are, how to access them, and, uh, what, what can be or can't be done on certain trails, and to make it available and promote it beyond our bounds for people to come in, and that's helpful in economic development, and as well as the enjoyment of people, uh, to be able to come and see, um, just the gorgeous beauty we have here. Since we began meeting, we've added three additional purposes that are associated. And, uh, the first one is to get involved in the helping of maintaining trails. Um, and so we're working with Jeff. I've just become approved as a, a layperson, if you will, uh, to authorize to go and help clear trails, and then, uh, as other people show interest, they would sign up with me, and, uh, we can start forming, uh, trail maintenance crews locally or bringing in groups from outside our bounds. So we're really excited about that, and we're just beginning. I've cut up fifteen trees so far from blowdown. The fifth purpose is to create a Trails Master Plan, which Charles just mentioned. This is building on the foundation of one that was completed here in the county in two thousand and four. Trails Master Plan, uh, five individuals from the two, two main towns in our county worked on that and, um, created it, and it, and it had eight, I think it was eight proposed trails that would be created, and they, and they were able to do two. And then, uh, for whatever reasons, it did not continue after that. So in, um, as we formed as a group, we said, "You know, we want to, we want to work off of that and, and maybe expand it." And so we have. We have a draft of the master plan that has, uh, just been finally approved as our group, uh, and that's about to be shared with the public, and I'll share more about that in just a second. The sixth and final, um, uh, purpose was to, um, create or propose several new trails. And they're in that master plan, uh, some possibilities. We don't know what obstacles there are, we don't know whether they're all possible or not, or what it would take, and so it's really exploratory, but it is a dream. And so in order to move towards, um, these purposes, we planned a community event, January thirtieth, in just under three weeks, at All Aboard West Cliff, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. We're going to host a community event to which all the public is invited, and we want to cordially invite the three of you, uh, if it's possible, if you would come, uh, because it's, um, I think it pretends to be a, um, portends to be a pretty fun night. Uh, we're going to share the master plan draft and then invite the, uh, whoever's there to talk to us about, you know, how do we make this better? Uh, where are we, where have we got it wrong? What would you do differently? Uh, what are, what's a dream you have? Where's a place for a trail that you've seen for years and nothing's been done with it? And all that sort of thing. And we'll have maps and we'll mark them up and we'll, uh, get people's suggestions and hopefully we'll gain ownership among a, a larger body of people. Uh, we will come, uh, together after that and, uh, incorporate that feedback. And we may have another event, um, to, to be able to, um, share it. We'll, we'll wait and see what the nature is of what happens on the thirtieth, but...
So, just going to pull...
Yes, sir.
The purpose of the meeting on the thirtieth is to, um, lay out the master plan for anybody who's interested, is that what I heard?
Yes, and to gain feedback. And the feedback is crucial, especially because we've been told by folks at state level, for example, that if you don't show that you've gone and tried to get your community involved, uh, you're not going to get anywhere with appeals for grant money or anything like that. So we really have taken that seriously. We want to know what other people in our county see, what they feel like's missing, anything like that. So it's to share it and to get feedback on it. Uh, we have invited people from seven different user groups, and, uh, I always have to like check my list to make sure I haven't left one out, but, you know, on foot, horseback, and the horse community among the Amish, uh, mountain bikes, road biking, motor biking, ATVs, and snowmobiles. Those presently are the groups of, or at least, uh, networks of people, and we've, we're getting word out to all of them saying, "We, we want you there, we want you there in any number."
I meant Trump, I apologize.
That's fine.
Can I suggest also, speaking with, um, I believe his name's Tom from...
All the Range?
Yes.
Yes, Tom Dimmer.
Good, because he's got a whole group that I think would be very interested in this.
Tom has, uh, actually been attending our meetings, and so we've got word there, thank you. So we hope to move towards finalizing this master plan and with that, then to begin the process of, of, um, searching out these projects, hike, I mean, trails-wise, what's possible, what's not, and seeking, um, funding from foundations especially. And, um, so with that...
Charles.
See how he handles you? He's like Dale and everybody else when it comes to money.
Well, that was the instructional.
Yeah, that's what I was calling, that was right.
Economic development does sponsor this. I mean, we were the initiator of the grant request through, uh, through OEDIT, and it was one of about ten categories of grants that, uh, were solicited. And the one category didn't fit everything else, it was a county initiative. And the, the, uh, the grant request was initiated based on the fact that with, also with some coordination that we're doing with Fremont, Chaffee, and Lake Counties on outdoor tourism, uh, we needed to strengthen some of our areas of, of support and participation in that. And then the fact was, we had trails. And, and as we said, we didn't know or didn't remember the, of the two thousand and four, um, master plan, but, uh, I know in two thousand and three, I dealt with, uh, Dorothy Urban with this front-range trail, and it's basically been dormant since two thousand and three. And that was kind of the way, like Paul said, a couple of the trails had been developed, but when we said, "Hey, we got this grant," somebody, "Oh, we've already got a master plan." And then it was a matter of people having a hard time finding a copy. But it was, it did jumpstart some of our thought process. Uh, as I said, these grants, um, do not include any finances. If we come up with things that, uh, that we think the state, various agencies through OEDIT can support, we can ask for that, and that sometimes is a challenge, uh, and it's almost like a shooting in the dark because you don't really know what assets they have. They have directed us towards some folks that have got a real good relationship with the CDOT, because there's, there's concern amongst our cyclists about the, the lack of right-of-way along the roads and such like that. So that's probably one of the bigger issues we've got as far as, uh, potential impact. But, uh, it, as part of the budget that was proposed, uh, we had support for each of the ongoing projects, and basically to support this meeting, uh, at the end of the month, we're asking for two-hundred-and-twenty dollars from that economic development account to, uh, support, as we said before, uh, you know, uh, the, the rent of the room is a cost, and, uh, and various other support for, to publicize and, and encourage folks to participate.
Charles, this is, uh, this is for the room for the, for the meeting at one-time expenditure?
Yeah.
All aboard West Cliff, that's what they have.
Including maps?
It's all of the costs that's...
Markers and meat, or snacks, whatever.
Yes, right, yes. And we're, we're working up a bunch of flyers to publish, in the poster and such. So it's, it's, uh, that was an estimated cost, uh, for this one meeting, so.
And is it enough for printing and rent and all the rest of the things?
That's what it was proposed as, yeah.
Um, can I ask for a point of clarification?
Sure.
You've talked about the grants, but you said they didn't include any finances. Okay. In the world I came from, I thought a grant was all about finances.
A lot of us thought that, but then they offer, offered this.
So what else is there? Assistance, or what else would you apply for a grant or expect to get out of a grant other than money?
Well, it's like, we, we asked for the kickoff meeting, we asked for Luis Benavides, which is the outdoor guy. And so he came down, it didn't cost the travel or his time, didn't cost anything, he's on the state payroll. On, uh, other similar, uh, grants, like our community assessment and such like that, now they did have some money on that. We've got another grant, I think I mentioned in one of the earlier meetings about branding in cooperation with the Tourism Board. Uh, they're providing a consultant and a state person, but, you know, again, when it comes to the incidental cost of supporting it, um, that, that's one of those questions, you know, don't ask a question because you're not going to get a payout.
Maybe while you're sitting here, I'll just go ahead and I'll, I mean, I, that's what we have in the budget, we have money for economic development. Um, I'll move that we approve the request for two-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Yes, yes! Oh, thank you for that!
With the balance of the two-hundred-and-twenty covering the most...
How many trails do you want?
Four-lane trails. We're going to pay for the...
I move that we authorize two-hundred-and-twenty dollars to be taken from the budget and, and given to the Trails Initiative for them to have a...
All right, it's been moved and seconded to authorize, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars for covering the, uh, meeting on January thirtieth, to cover expenses, uh, pertinent to their meeting at All Aboard West Cliff. Discussion. I have some discussion, it could wait later, it doesn't have to necessarily belong to this. You know what? I'll wait and, and bring it up later because it's not really tied to this.
We, uh, we've got the thirtieth where hopefully our workshop, we can cover a lot of it.
You know what comment I'll make is, thank you for this, Dennis, the volunteer, this will help our community significantly. I know one of the beauties of our environment is walking outside and the trails and horseback and ATVs and being the volunteer leader and that, I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you, Jay.
That's kind of where I was going, I decided to hold it until...
I'm sorry.
But that's okay.
Anybody else have a comment?
You all can appreciate it, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, further discussion from the board?
No, not for me.
Okay, public comment? Yes.
Um, one of the comments was that the Trails Master Plan revision is ready now, but they want to put it out at this meeting. Is it going to possibly be available beforehand so that we can look at it? Because if you want to gain feedback at a meeting, it'd be nice if we could look at it beforehand, so.
I can see that they want, may want to retain that until the meeting to get people interested and attend the meeting, that would be my perspective, but certainly you're, uh, you're welcome to respond.
Um, I said, I, I think it's a, a great idea. Uh, I'm not sure how we would be able to get it out in front of people. I was going to say, either by tourism or, or economic development, uh, we can provide copies. So we don't have a vehicle right now to be able to, to post it, and you just draw and drop down and let...
I suspect we could do that.
Yeah.
Um, we may be able to host it on the tourism site promptly. It's in a PDF form right now, um, fully edited, um, and it, it's, what's been provided in the newspaper, um, is a public document at this point.
That's good. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to point out, Charles said...
I just wanted to point out, Charles said in cooperation with the Tourism Board, and I was on there before, but the document up behind Jay, if you haven't seen it, that was a two-sided map Tourism Board did. They did some other things. So, I think when you get into that printed marketing piece, that's certainly something that Tourism Board should probably be taking a look at.
They're definitely a part of it.
Good deal.
Yes, sir.
I am representing the Tourism Board.
Your name, sir?
My name is Greg Snell.
Greg Snell.
I'm representing the Tourism Board right now on the Trails Initiative and have done a lot of the documents publicity for this at this point. And certainly, that's how we're looking at it. The Tourism Board right now has four pages on its new website that are pointed towards trails. They're pretty thin right now. But, we're trying, we're hoping with the Trails Group to lift those up a little bit better. One of the, there was a mention too of what OEDIT was doing for us with this grant. One of the things that came through that is I was comped to Bicycle Colorado's Annual Bicycle Summit in Denver, where I learned quite a few things about how this has worked, particularly in the metro areas. But, there are other, interestingly, if you look throughout the state, I can even show you, if I had a connection to the internet, I could show you an app that shows bicycle trails around the state. And there's all these red dots starting in the southwest and swirling on up to Fort Collins. And we're in Big Donal. People who want to, you know, come through town with a bike, they don't want to go. And for a lot of other vehicles as well. And what we're trying to do is, is get that message out. But that trail map, which you mentioned, the snowmobiles in particular, mentioned that there's a lot of stuff on it that's just not right. And we need to fix that as soon as we can. But as soon as we can is going to be later this year, probably.
And that, the map on the back came from the Sangre Snow Runners Club?
Yes.
Collaborate with them?
Yeah, they're the ones who are very concerned about it.
I appreciate your input. And please don't misunderstand what I'm about to say. Public opinion typically would be geared towards the vote that we're about to take. And that was an area that we knew we were going to open ourselves up to as a commission. I'm not chastising anyone. I appreciate your input. I'm not sure what other opportunity you would have in today's meeting to discuss what you just did. So, I'm not, I'm not being condescending about that. But, the intent, when the commissioners added that public opinion or the public comment section was if you have something you would like to, to say to us to try to influence our vote on giving the $220, that would be the time to do that. I'm saying this almost to myself as a reminder that you may have to, to clarify that a little more as we go on in our meetings. Commissioners, are you doing the same thing? Again, please don't take offense because I think what your comments were were valuable. Obviously, they weren't pertaining to the vote that we were about to take today. So, just a...
Yeah, as a matter of fact, at the end of the meeting, public comments is when they...
That's true.
Bring up things that we could put on the agenda and vote on next time. For some reason.
The downside of that, these two gentlemen may be long gone by then too. So, I don't know what the perfect solution is there. But, to try to maintain the integrity of our agenda in our meetings, I think that's kind of what we need to try to stick to if possible. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, see to vote. All in favor of approving the $220 request from the Custer County Economic Development Corporation? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. I do have a discussion. I, I want to share my vision from probably 15 years ago. And that is a parking lot somewhere on the south end of the county and a parking lot on the north end of the county with a bike trail that parallels Grape Creek through this part of town and wherever else. I just, I tried to run that with my students in the old days and got nowhere. There's a lot of hurdles with that, obviously. Private land ownership being the biggest. But, oh, I just thought, what a perfect spot, right below the bluff, basically, where people could park, leave a vehicle, walk, whatever. So, you're pulling at some heartstrings from a long time ago from myself. So, applaud your efforts.
And with the interest that we've cultivated over the last year, like I said, we've had over 50 participants at various times. And generally, the meetings, the monthly meetings, there's generally close to 20 people there. So, you know, that's a pretty good crowd for this county on a continuing basis. And it is in coordination with the Tourism Board and such because the idea, if we can improve it, make it easier to use, then that'll help not only us local, but people that visit our areas for their use. And that has an economic development impact. And so, we envision this as an ongoing effort. Our obligations to the state is to report it for a period of two years. That's an economic development requirement the state puts on us. But, really, we're already looking at, at perpetuating this committee in some form beyond that just so we don't slide back like we did, obviously, in the 2004 standpoint.
Well, I certainly appreciate you being here. I'm sure my colleagues do.
Can I ask you a question before you dismiss everybody?
Sure, absolutely.
Because I grew up in this county and I've been on every mode of transportation, on every trail in this range, including a motorbike, dirt bike, with Van Terrace.
Wow, wow!
And so, and then they made a darn load of this area. And that was when I was immortal as a kid.
Oh, yeah.
You brought up a neat point at one of your discussion points was maintenance of the trails. They suck right now. They're not as good as they were. What they did, they had a grant of some kind that came through here back in the 60s. And they, they actually put in the little motor graders that you could walk behind, fixed trail, built those bridges. The bridges have been washed out since, a lot of them. So, I am hoping that you're going to, and you said, maintain the trails.
Yes, sir.
That raises flags too. And, and that means more Dolea grants or more grants. And I'm hoping the Department of Forestry is, you know, I don't know how you get them interested in fixing these trails except by use. Unfortunately, when they made it a wilderness area, that means we don't need to do that most of the time. Why do you...
Well, one of the things that it does, it precludes us from taking powered tools and vehicles. And we've, we've talked with the regional office out of Canyon City. We've talked to, to local reps. They, they would appreciate our help.
Right. I think Rainbow Trail, you could...
Yeah, Rainbow Trail is...
Which is probably the best one to be used the most if you can pedal along there and not kill yourself.
Yes. But, the whole idea is to improve our relationship with those. And, you know, we could get prisoners down here to, for, for labor teams and such like that.
Sure.
And, and part of the idea is...
Sure. That isn't going to impact and not going to warp them.
They, they do it for fighting fires and this. I mean, it's part of the, of their program. So, there's resources out there, but it requires an ongoing effort and some continuity. And that's what we hope that this organization can provide.
And again, just a point of clarification, your trails do not include anything in the Sangre's, basically above the Rainbow Trail, is that correct?
No, they do. They do. The, in the wilderness area, all of the trails that go up, the drainages are included.
That'd be for hiking primarily.
Yes, sir.
But, we're looking, and it's an experience that Economic Development has not developed yet, is with Goco. So, we look at that as a, a real potential for support. But, where the towns have been more successful in that, we don't have that expertise right yet. But, that's one of the goals to, to work there.
I wonder too if you can implement or put in the thought process anyway of some way, again, of documenting use. Maybe you mentioned that.
No, and that's, that's part of the problem. Like, we can sit here in the summer and see the pickups and the trailers go by with ATVs, and we have no qualifications and, and such like it. We talked to search and rescue. There's issues about some of the trails up there and the documentating that they've done where, where there's some systemic problems up there. And I know if you get Cindy started about the overuse of some of the trails. So, I think we have the potential of really touching on some sensitive items as we get better organized and come up with plans. Because the, it affects people's lives in a enjoyable, as well as it'll kill them if they're in the wrong trail. And part of the, the stuff up in the primitive area, you know, prevents signage to say, "Dumby, don't go down this trail or you'll die type of thing."
This is a black diamond trail.
Yeah, right. And, and, you know, considering what they're doing at the national level in national parks as far as restrictions and fees and stuff like that, I think the, the climate is switching so that we could come up as citizens of the area that's in our county that would say, "Hey, we really recommend that you do this." And, and hopefully, you know, we can make some headway on items like that.
And it's trails for all from here forward?
Yes, sir. Actually, in my communications with the state, it's still a Trails Initiative, Custer County Trails Initiative, AKA. But, the committee did that, and I think it's a good idea.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Paul, nice to meet you.
Good job.
Thank you all.
Nice presentation, Charles.
Thank you.
How is that letter?
Amazing.
Thanks again, Paul.
You're welcome.
I'll beat the meeting by the way. Oh, great. Starting on my calendar.
Hi, Cindy. Happy New Year!
There she is. Good to see you again, Cindy.
Yeah, good to see you. Happy New Year!
Tom Flower, nice to meet you, ma'am.
Hi, Tom. Very nice to see you.
J. Price, nice to meet you, lady.
Charles was right. Don't get me started on trails.
So, the next item of business would be hiring at... No, I'm TV. Wouldn't that be something, get all set out and they go, "Uh, yeah, you're not yet."
This will just have some...
Yeah. Uh, our next item of business is consideration of the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Ms. Cindy Howard, floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, there could have been amendments to the agenda. There may not have been. You've got the packet here.
Yes, ma'am.
So, my program is funded in part through an annual Emergency Management Performance Grant. Jay knows this. It's in 2017, it was funded 41% through the EMPG. And that grant does give funding with strings attached. That's the other part of grants. So, the strings attached are my work plan. And I do quarterly written reports, quarterly financial reports. I think one of your last meetings of the year, you approved that I could sign off on the quarterly financial reports. And I'm sure Donna loves that.
That's our concern.
Well, they still have to bounce to the penny and...
Do you need a motion from us to approve it?
I need a motion to, so the work plan is signed between Christie Coleman and myself, but the Part II jurisdiction gets signed by the Chairman of the Board and by the CFO. And then the Part III staffing pattern just gets signed by the CFO. But Donna Hobby wanted to have you guys go ahead and make the motion. And so, the motion would be to both approve signing the grant application. And then, when the grant comes back, which is typically in July, if you include that now, I don't have to come back and Tom can sign the grant, actual grant contract in July when that comes through. I'm, I'm estimating July.
And so, moved. So, you're talking about the grant application today as well as the...
The actual grant when it comes through. And I can come back for that, but if, you know, it's kind of a...
Don't say why you wouldn't.
I would appreciate it. Yep.
He, I'll second it. He, he moved it, so moved.
Yeah, I just said so.
And I'll also second.
Fine.
When he says so moved, he leaves it up to my discretion.
And then you got to figure out how to word it, Tom. It's for the grant.
I, I was using Ms. Howard's words.
It's been moved and seconded to sign the 2018, 2018 EMPG grant and authorize my signature on the subsequent grant itself approximately in July. Public opinion. Hearing none, proceed vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
So, I just need to write in...
And then you will take these to Donna.
And I'll get them back to the suit.
Please sit.
Yours is blue, mine is also signed in blue.
Yeah, when the actual grant comes back, you'll get to sign like three or four original copies and we'll get one returned.
All right.
Thank you much. Thanks, yeah. I'm going to give that to Donna for her file copy. And if you have any questions...
Let me meet her, pay, get back here.
Thanks for coming.
Let me know.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Painless, I hope.
Okay.
Good.
Super.
See you. All righty, thank you, ma'am. The next item of business is the hiring of a custodial maintenance position. I would inform the Board that our human resource person, Donna Hobby, myself, and our administrative assistant. Yes, thank you.
Can you guys move it? Give the sound so we can't hear a thing. And I'm the bad guy.
Thank you. And Brenda Gady, the three of us sat in on a interview process. We interviewed four candidates for the position of the combined custodial and maintenance position. And so, we're prepared, that committee is prepared to make a recommendation to the Board today on our selection, if that's appropriate for you gentlemen.
Who was the committee, Tom, again?
Donna Hobby, myself, and Brenda Gady. Yes, sir. I see wheels turning over there.
Do you responsible, responsible for human resources? I knew this was going on and I, I certainly said it was fine. And the concern was that if I sat in also in my position, I mean, you're building a maintenance so that's appropriate, obviously, for you to pick the person. As HR, we had a HR representative there, which was Ms. Hobby. I always love it when Brenda's there because she brings in lots of insight. But, as being on HR, I kind of feel like I should be involved in this. However, I understand the, the constraint that if the two of us sit together doing this, it might be perceived as a meeting and a violation of sunshine law. And the other side is, we can't do it as an open meeting because it's a personnel issue. So, I disvoice that for the sake of voicing it. I, I'm fine. I think the three folks that are making this decision, I have the utmost faith in. So, I'm fine with it. I just want to mention that.
And you didn't sit in, so there's nothing violated.
I don't even know who the candidate they were representing.
Right, neither do I. I thought it was fair that they, as long as they tell us the process and as long as we understand the voting, and that's the way he's going to do it.
Right. Well, and that's, number one, that's why...
Because it's conundrum. And it's nobody's fault. It's nobody doing anything behind anybody's back. It's just a conundrum.
Right. Yes, I understand that. Thank you for pointing that out. I would add to that also, number one, that's why I just didn't jump out and say, "This is what we recommend and be done with it." Because it, we still have that latitude. If you gentlemen feel differently, we can certainly continue that process or whatever. But, let me give you the, the background on it from my perspective. Number one, obviously, we had posted this position in the newspapers for, for two weeks at least. And we are without, as you well know, a custodian or a maintenance person currently. And so, my thinking was that if we could move that process forward, both of you gentlemen were out of town. Certainly, I would have acquiesced if you were here and would have wanted to do that. It was not a, a power thing for me at all. I felt like it was, one of us needed to be involved in that process and I was in town. And so, we wanted to get that moving forward. We did not make a decision until after January the 5th, which was the deadline, to see if we had any other applicants coming in. We did not receive any. We did receive applicants very near the point where we were doing the interview process and we considered those also. So, I need to tell you that we had six applicants. We did not interview all six. We decided to interview four of the six because we felt that two were, were just not...
Sure, not...
I want them qualified, that's not...
That's not unusual.
Yeah. So, we narrowed that down to four. We did interview those four, had good interviews with all four candidates. So, if you gentlemen instruct me to proceed with my report and make a recommendation to the Board, I will do that. So, after going through those four candidates and then some deliberation afterwards amongst the three people on the, the committee, we unanimously agreed to recommend a gentleman by the name of Ed Reinhardt for our custodial maintenance position. I can tell you that Mr. Reinhardt does live here in Custer County. He had great background.
Yeah, can you summarize that?
I can, yeah.
Strong points, or I don't want everything, but just what made him the best?
Well, he certainly brings... Well, he certainly brings a great knowledge base of maintenance and repair, has many of his own tools that he is more than willing to use in this position. He has an extensive law background, just an impressive individual.
As a handyman to come up here.
And that's one of the things, we kind of asked him in an indirect way, and he said that he moved here specifically for this pace of life, this culture. He wanted to slow down, but he tired out of law enforcement, loves it here, and is up trying to, as we're speaking, decide what would be appropriate and what would not be appropriate to say on his behalf. I want to speak for him.
I think you said it all.
But just an absolute peach of a guy, really a nice gentleman, and a ton of experience. I'm sure if you ask Donna, you could look at his application and resume.
Who's gonna ask for a copy of his resume?
Yeah, there's just...
His resume?
I do.
Could I have a copy?
But I'd like it back.
Okay.
She's an Indian giver.
But there was no question among the committee that he would, in our opinion, be a perfect fit. He's excited about the possibility, has no reservation about the job description, willing to work after hours, I mean, it's just...
Salary fit?
Salary fit, yes, sir.
Let me cut to the chase here, if I may. I trust the three people who made this decision. I know the process was done appropriately and fairly, since the three of you did it. If you feel this is the proper person, I'm totally on board. If you need a motion to hire this person, I will make that motion. If he needs to...
Yeah, as only the spokesman, I certainly was not the Chair of that committee. We shared those responsibilities, but only as a spokesman, I can tell you, we wholeheartedly recommend this gentleman and...
Well, we need him.
Hope that he will accept, because I just think he'll be a perfect fit.
Can he start immediately?
No. He's currently employed, so he does need to give two weeks' notice. We understood that. Thank you for asking that, Counselor. I meant to inform the group of that as well. So, we still would be looking at a couple of week period of somebody hauling the trash and shoveling the sideside.
Somebody washing the windows, Tom.
No, the windows are waiting.
This man is very qualified, do you think?
I'm 100% sure, 99%, because you get...
You know what I'm concerned about, of course. You know what I'm concerned about.
Yes, I am. I am 99% sure that he is absolutely excited to be part of this team.
I move that based on the parameters that the committee has discussed, and within the parameters of the budget for this position, that we extend an offer to Mr. Ed Reinhardt, Edward Reinhardt, and people fingers crossed that he accepts.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second you.
It's been moved and submitted to offer the position of maintenance custodial to Mr. Ed Reinhardt for the agreed salary of $24,000 a year. I will throw that in your motion, if you don't mind, sir, because I think that does...
Well, we normally don't tell people what people's salaries are.
Just within the budget.
It was in the paper, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It goes in the paper.
Apologize later.
I'm overly cautious.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Thank you. I certainly...Again, I have discussion. It does not directly pertain to the motion, so I'll wait till after we've been... Commissioner Candy, any discussion?
No, excuse me. I think I'll go to the Sheriff's Office.
Public comment?
I just need to spell his name.
R-E-I-N-H-A-R-D-T.
Just a question for the papers. Is it appropriate to publish the name of someone we're extending an offer to, or do you do it after the person accepts? I'm just curious.
Yeah, good question. I suppose if you...
I don't know.
I suppose if it was stated that they have voted to offer a contract...
I'll file it.
Because we haven't technically...
For the IT position, you've used numbers.
Yes, we did.
And didn't, and did not give a name until after it was a done deal. So, it didn't go, it went in the paper as they have selected someone.
Right, yes.
Well, you could say that we've selected him pending...
Or that we've voted to offer him the position.
Pending his acceptance.
That would be technically correct.
I'll file it out, I just...
Yeah, it's good, great.
I mean, people can listen, can obviously listen to the tape, but what kind of idiots do that? Oh, sorry. Besides me.
I'm not spelling there.
Besides me. I don't, all right?
Further discussion? Hearing done, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose nay, motion carries. Let the record show that we have voted to offer Mr. Ed Reinhardt's contract of custodial maintenance. With that being said, you've had opportunity to briefly glance at that resume. I don't know where we're at with the whole salary thing on a new hire, but to put it in some perspective, we saved $12,000 by hiring this gentleman versus what we were paying to have the courthouse cleaned.
I don't mean to point it, Brenda, but Brenda, you get the kudos for this. You're the one who brought to our attention that we're paying ridiculous sum.
I did? No.
No, that was you.
Virginia. Now, Virginia.
Virginia?
Don't put that on me.
No, I was gonna compliment you.
And actually, I think that was sort of an issue all along for a while, because we had one guy doing three jobs, and then they came on and did it for twice, and then that was public information for a long time and a concern. So, this is good, though, it's getting straightened up.
And I did question it at our December voucher meeting, what that figure was for, what services we were getting for that. So, I guess just as a conversation between us, that I feel like we're very fortunate to have this person, without a doubt in my mind, to have this person in that salary range. So, I don't know what the protocol is for moving a person along on whatever salary schedule and...
Well, that's why I sent that email out.
What I've heard before, and Donna, I talked to Donna about it when I first was asking questions when we were being ready to be confirmed, is that there's usually a six-month probationary period they look at, and then you've got a chance to finalize it to an amount that you might think is more appropriate, if that's enough, or less, you know, if it's screw, if it's not the right guy, it's my... And then you can adjust the salary, and I guess, I don't know, is he on the same schedule everybody else is with five-year longevity stuff and that kind of...
That's what we need to work on.
Yeah, that has not been decided, and that's why I want to have this conversation. Personally, I feel like, for a couple of reasons, one being the history of this position in the last two or three years, and I'm sure both of you are aware, they advertised for this position in 2017 for over two months and got zero responses. I think this is a position that we need to look at...
What year was it, Tom, did you say?
2017.
2017.
Yeah, last year.
Did he not see it?
Wasn't here then, I don't believe. But yeah, they had no responses to that request for that position. So, I guess, to cut to the chase, my feeling is, number one, I'm certainly okay with the salary that we've offered him at, and he's agreed to accept that at, but I would like to take a hard look at about six months and say that we need to review him. Now, I don't know, again, how that all falls out in our, not only hiring policy, but our salary schedules, and they're all over the map, as most laws know, so...
We don't have any salary schedules, and that's why we wanted to form that committee to get that together for, starting in 2019. The last several years, everybody's just kind of been under the understanding that $24,000 is kind of a starting point for, on the, that's the lowest that we'll go. And, but we need to...
Yes, sir. Let me just, procedurally, did we approve this?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. Prior administration had a lot of conversations about this longevity salary increase, and came up with procedures that the prior administration felt was more appropriate. And we have people who've been here 30, 40 years that are making a very large salary for the position that they're in based upon this five-year longevity thing. And I don't remember exactly, and I think it was in the handbook, although I know that's under review at the moment, was that anybody who was hired prior to, I believe it was January 1st, 2018, was certainly not gonna take anything away from something that was promised, so your grandfather didn't, but new hires, we would do a longevity increase in salary at the end of five years? And I think that was, I think that was the end of it, so it wouldn't be, because it's a compounding interest, you know, and it becomes to a point where, you know, you may have someone who is so far out of range that, you know, it's just not appropriate.
That's right.
Is that something you're considering in the committee? Is that...
Well, that's what the committee, one of the things they were gonna look at.
And it was actually taken out altogether, Jay.
It was?
Well, in your revised proposal, correct.
The one that we, that the prior administration, was the one no longevity raises? Okay.
And, but, in our meeting that we had a few weeks ago, yeah, everybody, we want to put it back in there, but come up with a better, not do it on a percentage so that it gets compounded, because then it does get huge at the, and that's where the salary schedules come in and all that, that...
So, you're gonna come back with a recommendation to us?
Well, I'm hoping that one of you will be on the committee, because...
Well, we just had, so the committee's not established? I thought...
Well, this is a different, we're talking about...
And it's not the policy.
We have the policy committee, and we're almost about to wrap that up, but we want to get a salary committee together that discusses the longevity and the salary schedules.
Is the salary schedule not a part of the job description?
No. We've never, back in 90, probably 93, 94, we had a committee, we put a committee together that Mike Finney was on that committee, and he did a ton of research from other counties to more size, and trying to put a salary schedule together. We got it all put together, and then, like, the very next year, everybody understood, this is what the salary schedule is, and then, I don't remember what department it was, came in and said, "Well, we don't like the salary schedule. We want this person to make this much," and it just, it never...
Totally wrong.
And so, that's why we want to do it again and have everybody stick to the plan.
Make it consistent.
So that you don't have people that are starting out at $24,000 a year, and then you have people that have been working here for 30 years that are making so much...
More.
I mean, I don't mean to...
Just so much more than $24,000.
Their fault.
Yeah, so much more than their job title or whatever.
The inequity is the problem.
Yeah.
So, being the area responsibility of HR, I would really like to be part of this. Certainly, anybody else is certainly welcome to do it. I'm not, I don't do exclusives, but I'd like to be part of it, because this is a discussion that we've had in the past. I bought off on the fact that it just, you should be, just, I'll tell you now, my feeling is you're rewarded for doing good work. You're not rewarded for living a long time.
Right.
I mean, so, I would really like to be part of this.
And that, and I'm glad, I hope you will be a part of it, because I put in my email that I wanted one of you guys on the committee, because you've got planning and zoning, and Donna, and you have your groups that are under you, and so you have to have input as to that, and that's why I wanted you.
Yeah, good, they own elected officials, positions, and their departments.
Right, right. JD and Virginia and I, we all sat down, when we did the budget last year, we sat down and kind of came up with the salary schedule, and we got to kind of finalize ours, but you guys will need to come up with something for your groups.
Who's the chairman of that committee proposed to me?
We haven't decided yet, because I have only had one volunteer so far, now two.
Well, I agree, and I think he should be on it, or one of us. However, I would only agree to that if it's understood that because he's a county commissioner, he doesn't have the, our expectation is, you bring options to us. If he doesn't agree, or I didn't agree, in that meeting, you're not there to change that. And if the committee would override that suggestion, he's gonna have to have an input.
Oh, yeah, and I think that everybody needs to agree.
And then you would present the options to the three of us.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, it's stifled.
Yeah, and everybody needs to be on the same page.
Not that you do the wrong thing, it's just, or me, it's, I'm trying to avoid the harassment issues, the personnel issues, and the open laws, and all that stuff that got us all in trouble last time.
Here's how your committee has to do it.
No, I know you have it, but sometimes, but what happened, Jay, and I went through this because of the recall, is that there was an impression of intimidation when a commissioner would walk these halls and say, "Here's what I think ought to happen," and people were afraid to voice an opinion because they were afraid for their job. So, that's my only point. And I know that's not the case here, and I know we have a whole different complexion on this board, but we have to avoid the perception with the public, because that's fresh in their minds right now. And so, I agree, and I'd like that, and if I'm on a committee like, or a board, you know, that's my, our job, my job would be to participate. I don't, if they don't want to take my suggestions, fine, and they come to the board, then we can, that's what my job is, is a point of contact would be to bring it there and let them voice the opinions everybody had, and, you know, that's good. So, I think it's great, and I think you're the right guy to do it, because of the experience you've had, and the HR piece as well. And you've already gone through the suggested model that you've pointed out that you worked and were comfortable with, and maybe they don't have the same opinion. But I want to make sure that they have the free ability to, you know, so brainstorming session, you come together, get options, converge, and it may be what it is, and bring it to us.
Yeah.
Because I may or may not be able to attend, and Tom may or may not be able to attend once in a while, and, you know, it wouldn't matter. Of course, don't be worried. If we all three get there, then it becomes a public meeting. We gotta be careful. Or two, it's just two, gotta be careful.
And the difference is on that, I kind of keep saying this every time, we too can go to a meeting.
I hear you.
We just can't discuss policy or new policy decision. That's all we can't do.
Well, we...
We could sit there and discuss what's going on, there's no issue there. Counselor, does that sound reasonable, right?
As long as it's not a decision that the two of them are agreeing with, that they come up with.
You know, I don't...
Well, I think our purpose is to come up with a plan that everybody agrees to and that everybody sticks to.
Right.
Because that was JD's concern. He said, you know, "We came up with a plan, and then a year later, it went out the window."
I'm not arguing that, Kevin. I'm just working the process of getting to that point and making sure that you have, that it's not intimidated by the fact there are two commissioners sitting there that are listed, and just being given you, I know I couldn't sit still, I'd say, "What about this?" You know, "What about that?" And then you all think, "Well, gee, you know, Candy said this, he probably wants that, and he won't vote for it if we don't..." That's not true, of course, but you gotta avoid it.
Well, I think, again, it's, it comes down to a trust factor. We had this conversation yesterday. I don't think this community wants their governing body to be afraid to get together and get involved and be part of a process just so that we do not appear to be something.
I think we should have input.
If we're open, honest, and upfront, I don't, I don't want to do my job based on what I'm afraid the public perception is gonna be.
No, I agree. I'm not suggesting that. I just want to make sure they understand, and that, and we've given them guidance now. You go out there, and just because I'm sitting there, you don't have to bow to whatever my suggestion is, because it may be off the wall. Because I, and Tom's guilty of this too, I, he and I think out loud, and it doesn't mean that it's, it's what we really believe. We look for it, it's a way to make decisions by thinking out loud, "Well, what about this?" So, that's all I'm saying. It's a cautionary thing, and I'm making that publicly known in this meeting, because this is a bona fide meeting with the three of us talking. So, that's just my caution.
Yeah, and I don't know if we want... Yeah, and I don't know if we want, at some point, to call that a workshop. Certainly, I think we need to be up to speed on that whole thing, but I don't think it's a commissioner workshop. It's a committee functioning.
It's a committee working, is the point of content.
And it's like everything else. Like, when I go to recycling meeting, you know, it's not a public workshop, you know, and when they call a meeting to talk about salary and salary ranges and that kind of thing, you know, I'll go to that. Counselor, who's need to know who's there?
Right.
Yeah, and I would think, Kelly, whoever ends up being that chairman, if, if that committee wants commissioners to attend, then I would say extend that invitation. I go to meetings that I'm not necessarily invited to as a commissioner. I've done it, but, and this would be a little different situation, I think, but it's a concern of mine as a commissioner, so...
But we have our time to really get down and dirty with when they come to us in a full meeting, and you can really voice it and get your concerns out on the table if they don't cover it. That's the whole point, and that's why we have the boards and committees to do our work, so we can go off and do other things that we've got to spend a good amount of our time on, like the upper Arkansas, whatever.
Well, and I certainly think internally, we have got to get a handle on this whole salary thing. It's all over the map. There's no consistency. There's no, really, there's no organization to it, and I come back to my original point about our custodial position. I would like for the commissioners to be able to look at that in six months with our human resource person and see, because honestly, I'm not sure that 12, that the salary offered is representative of the time and the effort and the expectations that are gonna be put on.
Just FYI, in the past, that discussion has come up many times, and Bill, you had it exactly correct. You're a probationary employee for the first six months, based upon how you did your job, attitude, and everything else, the whole gamut of what kind of employee you are, salary adjustments are very often made at the end of season.
Adjusted to what they...
Exactly, so, I'm, I agree with what you're saying, but I think we already have that policy.
Yeah, and we did discuss with all the applicants that not necessarily review the salary, but the benefit package, when that kicks in after six months for the...
There is a procedure on that.
Yeah, and we explained all of that two days, so our candidate is up to speed on that as well. Very good, gentlemen. Thank you. Appreciate your patience and cooperation in that matter. Anything else, gentlemen? I know we had amendment to the agenda, but if there's something else that's come up, would offer that opportunity?
I don't have any.
Neither.
Brenda has asked, "The courtroom's available on January 31st. If you want to decide that that's where the meeting will be that day."
I think we ought to just have the meeting there that day.
I do, too.
If it's a small group, let's just do it there. It's more official. We swear everybody in in that room. It's our proud meeting room.
Would you make a motion that affects it?
I'll move that we hold the January 31st, 2018, a Board of County Commissioner meeting in the courtroom, now that we know that it's available.
Well, second the motion. Discussion.
I guess a great idea.
Thank you. Public opinion. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of holding the meeting in the courtroom on January 31st, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries.
Before you close out, I got something that was had to make today.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. I'll just pass it on to you then.
Okay, I, I meant to write it down, and I did not.
Go ahead.
Yesterday, we were remiss in making an appointment to the Arkansas Basin Roundtable. It is a educational and promotional group that meets, they meet in Pueblo typically. They have met up here. Keith Hood has been on that committee for seven or eight years. We failed to make that appointment yesterday. He did send us a letter of intent when I asked him at the deadline for that, and it was certainly an oversight on my part not to add him to our list of appointments yesterday, so...
Yeah, he really did point out there's, the town should have one in there, and they've not, so he's been the only representative for three or four years.
Right, yes, and I told him I would speak with the two towns. The two, it's actually a municipal representative, so it would be one rep from the two towns, no, not each, but for the two.
Oh, it's municipal, I got it.
Yes. So, I would move that we appoint Keith Hood to the Arkansas Basin Roundtable.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to appoint Keith to that roundtable discussion. Hearing none, sorry, public comment. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Jay?
I said aye, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I apologize, I was remembering his voices.
Pose nay.
It's quiet, but strong.
Motion carries. And would you add him to that list on the bottom of that list, so we have that record?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am, because it was not on that record, and I will personally talk to the two towns and proceed to see if they want to have a rep on that board. I would guess they would have to get together.
Is that a one-year term?
The administration doesn't know.
Yeah, they might, no, pardon me?
Do we know if that's a one-year term, or...
Uh, yes, that's a one-year term, he told me. Yeah, to Keith's credit, he has faithfully gone to those meetings, whether he had been actually appointed or not, because I don't think we're the first commission that has failed to get that done, so. You had a copy of his letter, Bill?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Floor is open for public comment. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good.
Good. Anything for the...
Linda, you're always good for a comment. You're not.
Okay.
No, you don't have to, I'm just teasing.
I would like to apologize for not including, asking for that, I agree with the $220 that would go to the Trails group, but with that, I would have liked to have seen their document on the website.
Oh, yeah.
So, actually, I included that, and I will next time, so that I can...
And then, the website.
Well, the tourism website.
Yeah, see, that's the thing. They're trying to get their own, but I would guess they'll piggyback off of that tourism website.
Which I think's a great idea.
But, yeah, I think that's, anytime we can get volunteers to come together and not let something just slide off the back burner, which that has, it sounds like, for a long time, so, thank you for that. Other comments? Hearing none, Chair will entertain a motion.
I will move to adjourn.
I'll second the motion. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Meeting is adjourned. Let the record show at 10:58. Thank you all.
Hey, Tom.